Authority Quarterly Meeting Virtually. Sorry, we're running a little bit late. We had an executive session we had to finish up upstairs. The time is now 5:50 PM. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx Events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. First item we have is call to the audience. The Housing Authority Board welcomes public comment at this time only for items listed on the agenda, and there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, were there any comments or requests to speak received from the public?
Nothing for the Housing Authority Board, Mayor.
All right, well then I'll move on to item number two then, which is the approval of City of Tempe Housing Authority Meeting Minutes for April 15, 2021. Once we are all set, just let me know and I can go ahead and do a little roll call. All right, do I have a motion on the Housing Authority Meeting Minutes for April 15, 2021?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Devaro and I believe seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote here. Board Member Adams? Board Member Adams? Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Board Member Garland?
Aye.
Board Member Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Board Member Keating?
Yes.
Board Member Cubey?
Aye.
Board Member Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. The next one is item number three, which is the Housing Authority Governing Board Quarterly Update for the quarter ended June 30, 2021. And I'm going to call upon Levon Lemey for an update. Levon?
Good evening, Housing Authority Governing Board. This is Levon Lemey.
Actually, Levon, could I do something really quickly? My apologies, I missed something here. Can I go back here? I need to get Board Member Drummond's vote as well on the previous item.
Hi, Mayor.
Thank you, Board Member Drummond. That that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, my apologies. Levon, I'm going to go back to you for item number three. My apologies for the interruption.
All right. Good evening, Housing Authority Governing Board. And just, I will start sharing the presentation here in just one second. There we go. Sorry about the technical difficulties. Good evening, Housing Authority Governing Board. This is Levon Lemey. I manage housing services for the city of Tempe. The purpose of tonight's housing board meeting is to provide an update to the Housing Authority Governing Board on the activities through the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021, and to seek approval to implement all HUD issued regulatory waivers through December 31, 2021. As a continued adoption of the COVID-related waivers that have been in play for the last year, HUD has extended the use of these waivers through December 31 of 2021. These waivers include our ability to provide virtual housing quality, housing quality standards inspections, utilize electronic signatures from participants and applicants, have streamlined waiting list opening procedures. There is a full list of these waivers that I noticed P I H We have previously, and in the last board meeting, we sought council or board consensus to fully implement the waivers. As this is an extension of the waivers, we are coming back asking for continued board consensus to implement these. In moving through the presentation additionally, at the last board meeting, one of the board members had asked for an update of the growth of the program over the last few years. So we did prepare a program budget presentation and worksheet illustrating the growth of the housing services programs, including all housing assistance programs, administrative fees, and the Community Development Block Grant, Home Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, Affiliate and CARES Act operations. Over the last several years, housing services, just the housing assistance payments portion, has increased from $8.3 million in assistance to the current year of $17,751,439. Just as a point of clarification for everyone watching, housing authority programming is budgeted on a calendar year as that is how HUD provides the budget. So for this calendar year of operations in the housing services and housing authority area, we have just over $26 million in programming up from just over $9 million a few years ago. So there has been a considerable amount of program growth. And making sure we point out, there are some significant amounts of money that have been related to the CARES Act and to the American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds. So there has, the housing services area has been continuing to grow quite rapidly. And as part of our agency plan for this year, we are continuing to apply for any and all new programming that would allow us to expand our service offerings to the community. As for a base PHA operations update of programs, the Housing Choice Voucher Program continues to have 1,052 vouchers with a base budget authority of $11,243,000. We continue to have our HUD-VASH program, which we run in conjunction with the Veteran Services, the mainstream Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is specifically designed for households with non-elderly disabled members, the Family Unification Program, which we run in conjunction with the Department of Children's Services. The two highlighted areas, the American Rescue Plan for Max Leasing Funds. This is an additional $1.8 million. This is a direct result of the American Rescue Plan Act. This is just short of $2 million of funding that has been provided to increase all of our voucher utilization to full utilization. This is bringing up the additional number of families that we are able to bring on the program. We are issuing 320 new vouchers in addition to what we currently have this year in order to utilize the maximized leasing funds and that will continue into the future. The next program that was a product of the American Rescue Plan is the Emergency Housing Vouchers. We were able to receive an allocation of 50 of those vouchers. We have requested additional vouchers from HUD. That application is continuing to be processed. That has a base housing assistance budget of $1,1,724. That program will continue until September of 2030, at which point it would be phased out under the current legislation. As part of the housing operations, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program has been a key program for many years. We were awarded at the continuance of that Housing Self-Sufficiency Program grant, and it is specifically designed to enable families to increase their earned income and reduce their dependency on welfare assistance and rental subsidies. We have been working to increase the number of families on the Self-Sufficiency Program and have been receiving very positive interaction and will continue to grow the size of this program. For the additional programming-based Housing Authority operations, our Bridge and Bridge Two programs that we run in conjunction with Behavioral Health are still operational and continuing to be utilized. The Home TV RA Program at this time is full and waitlisted. Just as a as a refresher on the Home TV RA Program, we had reallocated any and all available funding to provide housing subsidy assistance in the form of emergency rental assistance due to COVID. That did bring this program up to $1.4 million in housing assistance payments only. These families are still on the program and will continue to be on the program until the end of the assistance period. Moving forward into an update of the affiliate activity, we have completed the purchase of 60 units. At this time, we do have seven units pending construction. Now, these units have been pending construction for a while. We had started to get the drawings done on these pre-pandemic. It was put on hold, but they are in the works and will be submitted for final design and review in the upcoming weeks. As an update on our capital improvement and replacement plan, because the affiliate is self-sustaining by design, you know, any rehabs that need to be done are done at purchase. We currently have approximately $154,000 in restricted asset, in restricted cash for the repair and maintenance and the capital maintenance of these units. Part of the structure of these units is in the first year that the units are acquired, 100% of the net proceeds of the rental income are put into savings for that long-term maintenance. Every year thereafter, 20% of the gross proceeds are put into savings for the repair, maintenance, and capital maintenance of these units, ensuring we always have sufficient cash to maintain. Any other funding that is available after that is then put into the affiliate fund where we are able to further housing activities, rehabbing units, acquiring additional permanently affordable rental units, or other activities along those lines. Just to provide an update, this house is our most recent renovation. It has just been completed and the lease is effective August 1st. So it was a full exterior renovation and paint, interior renovation with some, well, we didn't actually have to move any walls, but all new floors, all new paint, and security screens. So this is the most current affiliate-funded rehab. It is a five-bedroom, three-bathroom house. As additional part of the affiliate activity update, we are providing an update on the Hometown For All Initiative. This is a Tempe City Council initiative that was approved for affordable and workforce housing. These funds primarily can, are primarily restricted to the acquisition of land for assemblage, acquisition of permanently workforce rental units, 81% to 120% AMI, funding that is used to incentivize development, and a down payment assistance program or ECAP program for households in the 81% to 120% area median income. This is funded through a portion of the building permit fees that is collected and is estimated to be in the neighborhood of $2 to $4 million a year of dedicated funding towards affordable and/or workforce housing initiatives. To provide this update, we did want to make sure that we were able to cover this because this is a newer initiative. It came in in January. So of the cash received from the various donations, there has been $1,285,000 worth of cash that has been received. We have acquired one property that will be used as a pilot as a permanently affordable workforce home ownership option. We will be working with developers on that soon. In lieu, the city of Tempe had a budgeted item of $1.8 million to us for the Hometown For All Initiative. $1.2 million of that was provided as budget authority in lieu of the cash going into the, the actual cash going into the affiliate. That $1.2 million is to preclear multiple sites along Apache Boulevard, Watson's Project Art Space, and some CDBG lots and the Dorsey Properties in order to preclear these properties so that when the developers are ready to build, they have clean dirt and we're expediting that process of getting affordable housing developed. Those units are estimate, the currently anticipated number of units are 390 on those sites on Apache. So that is definitely speeding up our, our process. The commitments and pledges or pending cash receipt, these are the projects, developments, folks who have stated that they would be making X, you know, the various donations into the affiliate regarding the individual projects. However, at this time, we do not, we have not received the cash. We do have the commitment or the pledge. So we thought it was important to show the distinction between the cash received, the funding that was provided in lieu of cash, and then the commitments or pledges. However, I think it is important to note that we have just short, just over $6 million in cash commitments and pledges since January for the Hometown For All Initiative. So as all of these funds are coming in and the cash becomes available, we will definitely be able to get, gain quite a bit of traction into affordable and workforce housing projects. And as additional updates, our housing navigator. We have, over the last fiscal year, assisted 436 individuals and families. Eighty-nine of them were, she was able to assist with, specifically with housing through various voucher programs. And with this time, we have expanded to two housing navigators in order to be able to continue providing additional support and service to the community. That does conclude the presentation. And I would ask if we could get the council consent, or the board consensus in order to maintain the utilization of the HUD waivers moving forward through December 31st.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Levon. I will turn to the board members, any comments or questions? And if you don't have any comments or questions, I'm going to interpret that as consensus for Levon to continue moving forward. But I will just open it up right now. I see Vice Mayor Keating.
Great work, Levon, to you and your team. Please continue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Any other council members, any comments or questions for Levon? I'll just make a really quick comment then. You know, Levon, once again, thank you so much for all of your exceptional work here. It really is accelerating rapidly the development of affordable housing in our community, which is sorely needed. And I also appreciate you keeping track of the cash received as well as the pledges. And so obviously, you know, we're looking forward to receiving all of those pledges in actual cash or check form, but really appreciate you making that distinction for the public. I think it's very important for transparency and just so they know that you're obviously very diligently tracking everything that's coming in and what's been offered.
Thank you, Board Chair.
Any other members like to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Board Member Cubey?
I just want to add that a personal experience and it was about my brother, actually, in Huntington, Long Island. And it was so difficult to find, find information. And I eventually got my brother some assistance during COVID times, but I can't tell you how many hours we spent just trying to find the right person to talk to. And I just want to commend our city, our staff, Levon, and Naomi and the entire staff because we make it, we go above, above and beyond to try and make our information accessible to folks. And that's just not always done. You know, even in the wonderful hometown of Huntington Station, I didn't find it there, but we find it in our city. So I just want to thank, thank the staff and also thank Tempe Community Action Agency and other human service agencies who really do an extra special job of getting the information out and making this aid and assistance accessible to people that need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cubey. Any other board members' comments or questions? Well, hearing none, Levon, it looks like you've got consensus to move forward. We really appreciate your continued efforts and all the exceptional work that you do. And you know, just keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this Housing Authority Meeting at 6:09 PM. We're going to take about approximately one minute and we're going to let the staff load up the regular council meeting. So council members just stay on the line and we're going to start up in about one minute. And Madam Clerk, I'll just ask you to let me know whenever you're ready.
Still waiting for confirmation, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we're good to go.
Wonderful, all right. I'm going to go ahead and call the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting to order. It is now 6:11 PM on Thursday, August 5, 2021. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx Events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Item number one is a moment of silence. Let's just take a few seconds and have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Next up, we're going to go ahead and do item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll go ahead and start here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next up, item number three, meeting minutes. Tonight, I'm going to be assisted by Councilmember Devaro. Councilmember Devaro?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like the approval of City Council Meeting Minutes A1.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Devaro. It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yeah.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes unanimously, seven to zero. Next up, we have acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Councilmember Devaro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to move through the acceptance of board and commission committee meeting minutes, one through six, the one through six.
Wonderful, it's been moved by Councilmember Devaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Cubey. I will call for a roll call again. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams? And I vote aye as well. That item also passes unanimously, seven to zero. Next up, we have reports and announcements, mayor's reports. Just want to note that there are new appointments on these, to the City of Tempe Historic Preservation Commission as outlined by item 5A9 on our agenda. And once again, want to thank everyone for serving on our boards and commissions. They are really huge, frankly, to the city council to provide input to not only council but also staff as well. So I'll take a look at those on your agenda. And once again, thank you to all of our residents for serving. Next up, item 4B, city managers' reports and announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have a few brief items for this evening. First of all, following up on the announcement yesterday, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Chief of Police Jeff Glover for accepting and wanting to be in that position permanently. As we said in our releases yesterday, he's just been doing an outstanding job and is so committed to the department, the city of Tempe and this great community. I'm just excited that he's going to continue in this capacity with so much important work ahead of him and all of us. So I wanted to say that first. Secondly, and I know Greg has a few slides, and while he's bringing them up, I'll just want to say this is Greg Wols, I believe, last meeting, at least last regular council meeting with us. And I've said it before, prior to our break over the vacation, but thank you to Greg for all of his many years of service at the Tempe as well. We wish him nothing but the best. So Greg, if you have those slides ready to go, what you're looking at is a slide of our wastewater data page here at the city of Tempe. And the reason this is up is because within the last week, we received some incredibly exciting news. And that is that the city of Tempe's COVID-19 wastewater data collection, wastewater collection for COVID-19 tracking has been awarded a $1 million grant from the Centers for Disease Control in conjunction with the Arizona Department of Health Services. And this money will go towards researching and expanding the program, both within the city and hopefully regionally, statewide, and ultimately nationally. And so it's just so gratifying. And I know that Deputy City Manager Rosa and Chalstea and the entire team here at the city of Tempe, along with all of our great partners at Arizona State University, have put an incredible amount of time and effort in making this just a quality pilot that can show the way for, hopefully, the rest of the country in early detection and tracking of COVID-19 and potentially any of a host of other public health matters. And we'll remember, of course, this started with tracking of the use of opioids, which already shows how flexible potentially this type of data collection and waste stream collection can be. But to get that level of a grant after we've been at this for as long as we have over the last couple of years, it's just a tremendous sign of success of what we're doing and how innovative the city of Tempe can truly be. And I wanted to make sure that we, we let you, Mr. Mayor and council, and the rest of our community know about that. Next slide. Another thing that we found out this week that's very exciting, hopefully for you, mayor and council, and for our community, is that the city of Tempe, through the International Board of Credentialing and Continuing Education Standards, or the IBCCES, you know how much we love acronyms here at the city of Tempe, just became a certified autism city through our Community Services Department and particularly our Adaptive Recreation Program. This is, we're only the second city in Arizona, as you can see from the slide, to receive such a certification. And it shows that we went through the rigorous inspection and testing standards to show that we are the kind of center that can, in fact, help and accommodate and help people with autism and are on the autism spectrum to thrive and to enjoy recreational activities and other activities within our city. You can see all the different areas up there on the slide where these certifications will be applicable. And we're just super proud of the work that our staff did to get this very exciting accreditation. So congratulations to all of them. Lastly, Mayor and council, just want to note the passing of longtime Tempe City Clerk, Virginia Thompson. I believe there will be a statement that will be read as part of our public announcements a little bit later in the meeting. But Virginia Thompson was the city clerk here at the city of Tempe for 21 years. Hard to believe, but she actually predated my time here at the city because I'd been working here for quite a few years. But I can tell you, in working with people who did work with her over those, those long period of time from about 1968 to 1989, that is a period of time in Tempe history that was a great growth and expansion, going from a smaller, more kind of rural town to much more taking on the shape of the rural, of the urban community that you see here today. And having someone of the caliber of Virginia Thompson be a leader at the city of Tempe during that critical time was invaluable to the growth and development of our city. And I've heard just an abundance of great stories about her, her dedication to the Office of Clerk and what it means to be of that level and how respected she was by her peers. And so, and we note her passing and we mourn her passing, but we celebrate her life and her commitment to the betterment of the city of Tempe. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate it. Just a couple of things, and I know other council members may want to comment. Just wanted to say, first of all, kind of going in reverse order to the family of Ms. Virginia Thompson, just, you know, our thoughts and prayers. We are with you during, I know it's a very, very challenging time and just wanted to very publicly thank her for 21 years of service to the city of Tempe. I mean, that is, you know, I mean, clearly Tempe. I mean, that is, you know, I mean, clearly making the city better during a very pivotal time in our city's history. So obviously, you know, our hearts go out to her family and just really appreciate over two decades of service to the city. To Deputy City Manager Rosa Enchowsky, just thank you so much for all of everything you've done when it comes to this wastewater program. As you said, it talked about how this started with opioids, but we've seen the flexibility and how this technology can be used, and it's been so effective in getting proprietary data that we can use to look at our different ZIP codes to figure out what the levels of COVID-19 are, and to help us frankly, when it comes to microtargeting, when it comes to vaccines, or COVID-19 testing in certain neighborhoods, if we obviously certain kinds of spikes. So the money that we were awarded is clearly a sign of the exceptional work that you've been doing, and how much this system is not only paying dividends now, but will continue to do so far into the future. The, getting the certification on autism is incredible, just shows once again the great work that our Community Services team does, and really kind of creating an inclusive community for all who are here. And that's, that is such a huge thing. I mean, it's not that way in all cities, and we really, I know this council, our staff, and the people who live in the city, have a true commitment to making sure that everyone can live, work, and play in the city. And that's just a continued sign of how effective the City of Tempe is at achieving that goal. To Greg Wolf, I just wanted to say to you, thank you for everything. I got to know you, I knew you during my time as a council member, but I've obviously gotten to know you even a lot better over the last 13 months, because as mayor, not being able to do a lot of things in the council chambers and out and about, we shot a ton of videos between you and I and Jason. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your many years of service to the City of Tempe. I really enjoyed working with you, enjoyed shooting all those videos with you, but you have definitely earned a, have a well-earned retirement coming up, where you'll have the opportunity to do a bunch of other things. And just wanted to say it's been a true honor and pleasure working with you. And last, but of course, certainly not least, to our new permanent chief, Jeff Glover. I remember meeting Chief Glover back in 2008 when I was first a member of the City Council, and just, I mean, thought the world of him from our first meeting. He did exceptional work as a sergeant and lieutenant and commander within the Tempe Police Department. And I was so excited when City Manager Ching chose to bring him back to be the interim police chief last year. And he really jumped in with both feet, I think, two days before the Public Safety Advisory Task Force started up. He attended all seven meetings, was a very active participant, and has done an exceptional job of leading the department. And I know, has the full support from the people that I've talked to in the Tempe Police Department. I know he has their full support in leading them moving forward. So Chief, I know this is the culmination of a lifelong dream for you, and so excited that you're able to achieve that dream, but even more importantly, achieve it right here in the City of Tempe. So thank you so much, Chief, for your service, and looking forward to many years of continuing to work with you. Council, any comments or questions before we move on? All right. Let's see, Councilmember Cubey?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You spoke so eloquently for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hi, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garland?
I would just like to echo what you said, and I'm excited about Chief Glover and what he's gonna be able to do for the city moving forward. And I just have to say that I remember going to retirement party for Greg when he worked at Channel 10, when we worked there together. So this is gonna be my second retirement party with him. So wishing you the best, Greg. You are awesome.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members? Any comments? All right. Hearing none. Thank you so much again, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate all the announcements. Next up, we have item number five, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. The public may also submit written comments via the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card System at tempe.gov/clerk. The Consent Agenda this evening is miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A9, items 5B1 through 5B19, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C10. Any item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. Council, are there any items that you'd like removed tonight for separate consideration? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read?
Motion.
Motion.
Moved by Council, moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Adams. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, got you there. Thank you so much. And I vote aye as well. The Consent Agenda is approved unanimously, seven to zero. All right, next up, we're gonna go to the non-consent agenda here. All right, that's item number six. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. First up, we have miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item under the section is 6A1, which is to approve the utilization of a one-year state of Arizona contract with GuideSoft Incorporated, doing business as Nowitz Services for temporary staffing services. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion on item 6A1?
Motion.
Okay, I think I heard a move by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember, roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams? Aye. And I vote aye as well. Item 6A1 passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 6A2, probably the shortest section ever during my time as mayor, is to award a contract, construction contract to Builders Guild Incorporated for the roof rehabilitation at the Tempe Center for the Arts Project located at 700 West Rio Salado Parkway. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion on item 6A2?
Aye.
Move by Councilmember Navarro? Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm gonna call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A2 passes seven to zero. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. First item under the section is 6B1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the dedication of easement for sidewalk purposes and certain city-owned land for use as a public right-of-way related to the Alameda Drive Streetscape Project, and authorizing the city engineer to execute declarations memorializing such dedication and related documents. Council, any comments received, actually, I should ask, Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
All right, thank you. City Council, anyone wanting to talk about this? All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say a word?
Yes, please.
Just to commend Bonnie Richardson for her amazing work and public engagement on this project, and Robert Yabis, who, along with Bonnie, was able to obtain substantial federal funding to pay for this project. It's, it's gonna really help reduce traffic speeds on Alameda and beautify the street. And I think the neighbors are very excited, a little frustrated with the postponements that have happened along the way, but we're finally there, and it's a very exciting development in Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Any other council members? Comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Once again, just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a 65-foot easement for road or highway purposes, also known as a portion of Gilbert Drive, lying west of Miller Road, and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
None for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a 65-foot easement for road or highway purposes, also known as a portion of Gilbert Drive, lying west of Miller Road, and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. Okay, once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a 55-foot easement for highway purposes, also known as a portion of Gilbert Drive, lying west of Miller Road, and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. I'll just reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the amending of an existing electric easement over certain city-owned land identified by APN 124-27-014, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the amendment and related documents. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item will take place on September 9th, 2021. The last item under the section is 6B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Tempe, Arizona, amending the Tempe City Code by amending Chapter 13, Elections, Article 1, by adding Section 13-10, Signature Requirement for Mayoral and Council Candidate Nomination Petitions. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
No comments for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Once again, I'll just reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 9th, 2021. Okay, next up, we're gonna have item 6C, which is ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. These items were first heard on July 1st, 2021, and votes on these items will be taken tonight. The first item under the section is 6C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a public utility easement, lying west of Farmer Avenue, and located in the northeast quarter of Section 21, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, move to approve by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I will take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yep.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement located at a planned area development at the northwest corner of East Apache Boulevard and South Terrace Road. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
No input received for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Mayor, sorry about that.
No worries. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C2 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a public utility easement, lying north of Gilbert Road, and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. I've almost memorized it at this point. Any comments from the public, Madam Clerk, on this item?
Nothing received for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C3 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a roadway, public utility, and traffic control easement lying on the southwest corner of the intersection of Curry Road and Miller Road, and located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Hila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Or do I have a motion?
I'll motion to proceed.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. All right, I'll call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
But Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? And I vote aye as well. Item 64 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section, 65, has been removed at the request of staff. The next item under the section is 6C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the acquisition by the city of certain improved property at the address of 2101 East Apache Boulevard for use as short-term transitional housing, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to acquire. Any comments received from the public on this item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a request to speak from Nolan Williams.
Yes.
We could bring him forward.
Hello, thank you for having me. Thank you for giving me the time to speak, even though I inaccurately put in 6C5 when I filled out my form. Me and some other people that live here in the city, some of my friends and family and people I've talked to, were very, very supportive of the purchase of as much property as possible for the use of social housing or for transitional housing. I personally believe that if we can get the number of shelter and transitional housing beds up to 500, then we could completely eradicate homelessness in the city and provide a leadership role for other cities around. Obviously, that is a stretch and an aspirational number, but I think that Tempe is a wonderful city and we can try, we can strive to be in a leadership role. So I support, I support the purchase, and me and other people will be bringing up our support for the purchase later in more organizations. the purchase later in a more organized manner.
Great, thank you, Nolan. Really appreciate it. Good hearing from you. Madam Clerk, any other comments?
Mayor, I do have an additional card to read into the record.
Okay, please.
From Daniel Rubio, resident of Tempe. Daniel writes, "I strongly urge the council to pass the measure purchasing property to use as short-term transitional housing. Throughout the pandemic, we have seen how many people can slip through the cracks, our friends, family, and neighbors. Having people on the street is not just a moral failure, but also a policy failure. Acquiring more transitional housing would be an important step in addressing that. The Tempe and America we want is not one where we let the most vulnerable among us fend for themselves. I ask that you live up to our values as Americans and approve this ordinance." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Daniel. Really appreciate it. Good hearing from you as well. Madam Clerk, any other comments?
Nothing additional for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion on this item?
May I move, will you approve?
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. I will call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember QB.
Sorry, couldn't get to the button fast enough. I vote aye, but I also want to commend you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership. I don't think we'd be here tonight with this decision-making moment if it weren't for your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Really appreciate it. Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
I'm here, and great job on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Really appreciate it. And I vote aye as well. So Item 66 passes unanimously, seven to zero. Excuse me. The last item under the section is 67, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay and a development plan review for one existing office building, two new three-story office buildings, and two parking structures for Carvana located at 1275 West Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Butler Design Group. Wanted to note here that the applicant is requesting to reschedule the item to the September 9th, 2021 regular council meeting. Counsel, any concerns about that? And if not, I would ask for a motion to continue Item 67 to the September 9th, 2021 regular council meeting.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. I'll take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero, which means Item 67 will be continued to the September 9th, 2021 meeting. Next up here, item number seven, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'm going to call on council members for their comments, and tonight I'm going to start with Councilmember Adams.
I just took a bite of pizza, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyway.
Enjoy it while you can.
I just want to say that 51.6% of Tempe residents are vaccinated, but we need to increase that number. So getting vaccinated is the number one way to prevent COVID-19. Finding a location is super easy. Text your zip code to 438-829 for the closest locations, or call 1-800-232-0233. And they even have free rides and childcare that are available to help people. So the childcare is free, so please, please get your vaccinations. The second announcement is last month, we had the Tempe Job Monsoon, and there are green balloons all around the city. And I had the good idea of going around to different businesses and just checking them all out, and there was tons in downtown Tempe. And there are tons of green balloons everywhere, so that was super exciting. And I want to thank the city staff, the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Tempe Authority, Tempe Tourism, and all the businesses who participated. There were over 100 businesses that participated in this program. So it was just a great program, and I'm so glad that I was able to be a part of it. So thanks again to city staff for your leadership on this. Great job. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Awesome, thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the opportunity. And you know, you said a lot of things earlier today that, you know, I just, I have to make comment, especially to Greg Wolf. I mean, anybody that's been here for a while and has had to work through some social media stuff, and worked to do a video, or film an event, or whatever it may be. Greg, you know, my hats are always off to you. As much as I really didn't always appreciate your honesty, I know that that is one thing I could always count on from you. Kind of tell me how it went, and let's just take one more take. One more will be okay. So Greg, you're awesome. You deserve a break. Thanks for everything that you've done. You've really been able to help us, I think, get through these hard times, too. The Wolf Brothers are amazing, and I'm not going to know what to do when the team breaks up, but Greg, I wish you all the very best. That's pretty awesome. So thank you for that. And also, I just want to say, you know, I have to make a note, having a niece that has autism, what great work Community Services have really done, and to be a certified autism city, I mean, really means a lot. And I want to thank Councilmember QB, too, for her work and things that we've really done to elevate, you know, adaptive recreation, and the things that we're doing in our parks, and the things that we are doing for our youth and for adults, to really make sure everybody is included in this community. And thanks to Sam Mason. Sam is our Adaptive Rec Coordinator, and she's just really been able to take that position and what we do to the next level. And that doesn't happen if we don't have the right people in place, and the people that really care and want to truly make a difference. And Sam, you and your team, and Keith, the people that you have on your team, Keith Burke, are really phenomenal, and I'm so grateful for the leaps and bounds that we've been able to make over the years. And this distinction just really, truly shows how much we cared and how far we've come. So thank you so very much for doing that. And of course, Chief Glover, welcome back on a more permanent basis. You're awesome, so you know, goodbye to Greg and a hello renewal to Chief Glover. Really looking forward to the years to come. And you know, you're such a great person within this community, a trusted voice, a voice of reason, somebody that really cares about our employees, about the department, about this community, and I know you're going to do phenomenal things. So thank you so much for that. I look forward to many years to come with you at the helm. And then, one of the really cool things that we've been working on, and thanks to the council, you know, for your support to be able to bring this forward, is our Elevate Our Heroes banner program. And this woman that is here, Franny Griffin McLendon, is somebody that's really special here in the city of Tempe. And you may have heard of the 688, which was an all-black battalion of the Women's Army Corps, and it was actually deployed to Europe during World War II. You know, they helped to clear out more than 17 million undelivered letters and packages to US troops, just like within six weeks. And we are so fortunate here in Tempe to actually have one of the members living here in our community. So retired Air Force Major Fanny Griffin McLendon is a Tempe resident, and she is 101 years old. She was deployed in 1945, and in 1950, she joined the Air Force and served a total of 26 years in the military. And after that, she actually opened an antique store in Mesa in 1971. So, I mean, it's just really cool. I think she has such a rich and proud military history. You know, her service has helped blaze the trail for future generations of military women, you know, to follow and serve the nation in peace and war. So as a proud veteran in our community, we are very excited for her to be one of our very first banners. So if you are or you know a veteran that you would like to celebrate, commemorate, or just say thank you for your service, you know, make sure you get them a banner, and we want to celebrate and elevate all of our heroes. So far, you know, we have, we've had a great showing with the little media hit that Julie Kent and I did not too long ago. It's just a great partnership with the Downtown Authority and the city of Tempe. We have an opportunity for 120 banners. They're going to be displayed in the downtown Tempe's iconic lamp posts for the month of November, which seems super appropriate during Veterans Day month. And so the banners are actually going to be returned to sponsoring members or businesses as a keepsake after the month. And the price is only $100, and we really encourage you to jump on board. Check out the downtowntempe.com/military. And again, just, you know, nobody better, I think, to celebrate and to be one of our very first, our very own Elevate Our Heroes, other than Major McLendon. So Major, if you're out there and you're listening, thank you so much for everything that you do and continue to do, and we want to make sure that you are elevated, and you know how much we appreciate you. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. What an incredible, incredible story. Thank you for sharing. Let's see, next up, Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much to Robin and Julie Kent for that banner program. I got my banner, so I hope everybody else goes out and gets theirs, because it really was incredible, and it was super easy to do. So thank you so much for that. I also want to say that this is the first time that I've read through the Tempe Family Justice Commission minutes that we had in our council packet, that they did not write down that they were going to be looking for funding, or how are we going to get the council to approve funding for a family justice center? It was actually fun to read the announcement that the funding is there, and we're going to be doing something. And I just want to say thank you so much to Councilmember QB, who got that commission started, and was really an advocate for the Family Justice Center, and to Mary O'Grady, who's the current chair, and Karen Latham, and all of the other people on that Family Justice Commission. You guys have done great work, and I am so excited about what this Family Justice Center is going to do in the future. So I just want to say thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating.
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Garland, about the Family Justice Commission, and it's such a labor of love, and to have the first Family Justice Commission in the United States happen in Tempe is just frosting on the cake. I want to thank Karen Lathan, who is a current constable, who is the one who tugged on my coat and said, "We should be doing this. We need to do more in the city." So it's so great to see it come to fruition. Again, Mr. Mayor, this is a night of compliments for you, but you know, I don't think it would have happened without your leadership and without Dorian's leadership coming on board. So thank you, everyone. I also want to say goodbye to Greg. He'll be sorely missed. You are the repository of all of the bloopers that have been recorded in I don't know how many years, and I imagine that you're going to keep that in a vault somewhere and like threaten us. No, I would love to see that blooper tape at some point, because I know I've contributed to my fair share of them. So thanks so much, Greg, for your decades of service to the city of Tempe, for your professional expertise, and over, you know, the three decades or more, you've seen a lot of changes in technology, and have just had this remarkable ability to adapt to all the new technologies and master them. So thank you, and congratulations to Chief Glover for your permanent, your permanent assignment as our police chief. Delighted that you are serving in that capacity. Thank you so much. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick congratulation to Chief Glover. Well deserved. I'm glad to have you aboard. We look forward to working with you through many years. And then to Greg Wolf, thank you for everything you've done. I know you had much patience with me, so I appreciate that, and enjoy your retirement. We'll talk to you soon, hopefully. We'll see you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I have no comments, since I made most of mine during city manager's announcements. I will move now to item number eight, which is public appearances. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments under public appearances?
Mayor, yes, we do. First, I'd like to call forward Dr. Jason Thompson Richter to the microphone.
Thank you so much. Carla, thank you for giving me the opportunity, and Mayor Woods, thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the Thompson family and the extended family. Thank you for the kind words that were said at the beginning of the meeting about my grandmother. The city of Tempe meant more to her than I will ever be able to put into words. She cared so much for the community, and as was said, we take a lot of pride in the fact that she was there as Tempe transitioned from the small town that it used to be to the impressive city that it has become. As a person who spent the first 33 years of my life in Tempe, hearing about my grandmother, what she would do as the city clerk, she would regale me with stories about the city would grow, there one day will be a lake that's going to be there, there's going to be some buildings that are around it. And as we visited with her three weeks ago, when she knew her time was coming, the questions that she had were about the city of Tempe. She wanted to know how the city was doing, and we showed her pictures of Town Lake and what has become of the city, the expansion of Arizona State. And even though her health had declined quite a bit, she was beaming with pride for what the city had become and the city that she still cares about. So thank you all for giving me the chance to address you all tonight. Thank you all for the kind words, and thank you for continuing the tradition of what she did and what she cared so much about in that city.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
Dr. Richter, if you stand by for one, I do have some commentary that came from the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association to read next. Several clerks contributed to this. Virginia Thompson served the AMCA, which is our state association, and the International Institute in a number of ways. She paved the way for the Clerks Institute and Academy, laying the groundwork for the curriculum that today, in partnership with the Arizona State University, is the foundation for the credentialing process in the clerks profession in the state of Arizona.